Item four, questions or comments from the floor. Do you have any? Dave?
Rod, I'd like to take this opportunity to commend the board of management for their action they took with regard to the taxation system in Rutland Town. I think the decision you made was a wise one. I think it will help to avoid reappraisal, which a lot of us still don't feel it's necessary to have reappraisal. I somehow felt hard to see at your last meeting that one member of the board, on his absence tonight, spoke in favor of having an open session. And as I've told you on several occasions over the past year or two, I believe there's a need, you know, in the town to have some kind of better public information on the taxation question, whether it's a public meeting or newsletter to the townspeople. I believe there's a lot of questions going on in town about where our tax system is headed. I know you did put out a press release and I have a copy of it, but it raises a lot of questions, like, for example, if the change you made with regard to the appeal cases with inventory, if that's going to be applied across the board to everybody next year. There's also questions about if it was right for ninety-four, why isn't it right for ninety-three? And frankly, I believe we're kind of getting outgunned in the press. I think there's a strong story to be told why you've taken the positions you had, and I think this last position you've taken makes your position more reasonable, but the word is not getting out. There's constantly particles in the press where the other side, that does favor reappraisal, has talked about things like class action lawsuits and things like that to force a reappraisal. And with all the money you're spending on the town attorney, you know, under $200,000, I think it would be wise to invest some of that money to have him inform the townspeople of why you've taken the positions you have. One thing that bothers me a great deal, for example, is when they keep talking about business personal property being at 100 percent. When we know that after the last town vote, that was put on a net book value system, which essentially means they can include depreciation, and in many cases, the value of that would be put in at 10 percent after it's fully depreciated. So there's a lot of factors there, and there's sort of, you know, two factions, I believe, in town. One faction that's so discouraged that they believe we have to have a total reappraisal, and others, like myself, that believe the system we have can be salvaged, and that the last position you took was a very wise one and prudent one. So I once again, for the record, ask that you consider having a public meeting or newsletter, have the attorney down, and let him answer questions. You're not into an area where you're not only affecting the appeal cases, but you're substantially, very significantly, affecting the taxes everyone in town pays. So that's basically my pitch, once again.
Okay. Thank you. We do have appeals still litigation, so when you're in a situation such as that, information to be retained is very critical for the case you're trying to build. You have to be very careful if you don't release the information that may prejudice or put your case in jeopardy, so to speak. And I think that's a concern of the town attorney in this particular situation. I conversed with him the other day. As a matter of fact, I mentioned that you were concerned about that, and he said you're free to call him, and he will tell you everything that he is comfortable with informing you with at this time. So avoid the rough, he'll give them our story, of course.
Yeah, well, what I'm concerned about, Rod, is public opinion, because reappraisal won't be decided by the board of management, it'll be decided by every voter in Rutland Town. And, you know, there's a momentum going on the other side, and the other attorney is apparently very comfortable of talking to the press all the time. And not that our attorney has to do it to that degree, but there must be some things. For example, if this thing on inventory is going to apply to everybody in town besides the appeal cases, I mean, that's something he could certainly talk about, or he could certainly talk about last year's vote and what that means, and how it put it on a different system for business equipment. So, you know, I don't feel quite right, you know, calling on myself as an individual. I just, you know, I hear people in town talking, and there's a lot of questions about the town's tax system. And, you know, I wish the board and the listeners, I mean, it could be a combined meeting with the listeners, would, you know, would answer some of these questions.
I will be speaking with Mark Sperry tomorrow, and I will raise concerns with him. I remember making a comment several months ago that the board is prepared to make adjustments where adjustments are necessary, and we will be firm where we feel we have to be firm. As far as I know, that is still a position of the board, so, other than that, I don't have anything else to tell you right now. But I will talk to Mark Sperry and see if he is prepared to get more involved in the discussion. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, East Proctor.
Sorry, it's Bert, you're next. Go ahead.
Uh, on the East Proctor Road, the dilemma. My neighbors are here, and I'll start off by saying I disagree with them, but we're still our neighbors. And I'm not speaking as a town person, but as a taxpayer and a resident. The action you took last week, it seemed like everybody got on this bandwagon with the electronic gate and everything, and I guess Joe gets the prices and so forth. But in the meantime, stringed in as a mixed thing, a taxpayer from another part of the area came in and offered a suggestion which we never thought of. And he approached it by saying, "We've got to make it inconvenient for the Proctor people to come this way." And he suggested a three-way stop sign at Maplewood Park that would stop the north south traffic on the East Proctor Road. That in turn is going to delay the people to the point where they may just continue on. To go a step further, I thought, like, Arch Street in Pittsburgh is the same, same setup that we had. They had Route Seven, and people took that, including myself, as a shortcut. People saw six or seven cars ahead of them on Route Seven, they knew Arch Street, you could go down there and beat the traffic until Pittsburgh woke up and put... They had to go through traffic, but I guess that was an ordinance to a village.
So there might be something...
Yeah, there might be a lot of that. But anyway, I went up there yesterday and, you know, just took a few pictures and so forth. And they have a street coming into Arch Street that would be similar to Maplewood Park, but that street, they give the right of way to, and they make the stops on Arch Street. Maplewood Park has been used to stopping, so I would say a three-way stop there. Another caller from the other end of town, Tom, suggested speed bump. You know, and that was formed on, you know, now... So anyway, for what it's worth, I counted up the houses that are affected by that, and you've got to go into Maplewood Park because they're going to be affected as they come out left or right. And there's fifty, fifty-three homes that start at the corner, go up Maplewood Park, and down around Grand Lane and so forth. But on a petition, I counted that thirty, thirty homes were represented. Four families were in Maplewood Park. We were talking about East Proctor Road, so as far as the children aspect, thirty-five to forty years ago, when it was actually Route Three, there was about approximately fifty-one children growing up in that area. Today, on the East Proctor Road, we have Joanne's daughter, four years old?
Three.
She lived on the East Proctor Road, and the Adet boy, and she's not in school, but the Adet boy goes to school with his mother because she's a teacher. So there's two children that come out of Maplewood Park and take the bus, so...
Adet doesn't come out of Maplewood? Adet doesn't come out of Maplewood?
No, no. No, he's on the East Proctor and goes to school with his mother, so he doesn't even ride the bus. There's three other children, new children in Maplewood Park that go to a church-type school, so... So I'm saying, before we go into electronic gates, and we've heard from the district highway commissioner that the one down the airport, I don't know where exactly it is, but they have trouble with it, parked, or even so forth. So why don't we take a cheaper approach to start and see what action we get? It may, it may solve the problem. The three-way stop would...
Why do we have to make it convenient for Proctor residents that you mentioned?
Well, those are the people that are coming through.
That's not our problem. They're not concerned about us going through Proctor and making it convenient for us.
Well, you've got a highway that's been a major highway, and I know forty years of friendship with the neighbors going down the tube, but we disagree and...
You know, and there's a lot more traffic today than there was forty years ago, as you mentioned, and it keeps increasing every day, year.
The three-way stop is very inconvenient for the citizens on the road, that to let things go on as they are, it's not effective.
It certainly stops the Arch Street people in Pittsburgh.
I know, but we're dealing with a different element here.
No, I don't think we are.
Howard, you had to hand up...
Yeah, a couple things. You know, I think you should put some pressure on the state, number one, to increase the timing on that light down at the junction of three and four. You know, coming from Proctor, there's just not enough time on that light. I don't care what the state says, it's not adequate. And they ought to do something there to help alleviate the problem, I think by adding, you know, more time for Proctor residents to get out. And, you know, along with the stop sign thing, I guess, being a ball field where it is, it might help to control and slow traffic down, you know, by the ball field. You could put a walkway across, you know, somewhere within the, you know, where the stop signs are. So I think before you go jumping, you ought to really look hard at all the alternatives, whatever they may be.
But George, you're saying we're going to want to make it convenient for the Proctor people. Actually, we're trying to make it inconvenient that they don't save any time that way, you know, come Route Three. And Wayne Jarvis is going to look into it, and he told Joe and I that he's going to attempt to add some seconds onto that stoplight.
Two seconds isn't going to help, I'll tell you that. Personally, I don't think the state's going to help us a bit. They don't help anybody else. The only solution is the one that we came up with in the last meeting, and that's the swinging gate or sliding gate, to let emergency vehicles, road buses come through, and keep all other ones out of there.
We got a gate price, approximately $4,000, although that does not include getting power to it, so power-operated piece of equipment. We don't know yet what that would cost, so we don't have a complete package to look at right now. And I would like to take a look at the ones that are in the area that are operated.
You understand what I'm saying?
You know, go down to the airport or wherever to see if they do the job or if they do not do the job. And before we connect to someone like this...
I checked out the one at the Albany Airport, on the back side of the airport, and that's a slider, and that's operated with a car. And they don't have any problem with that gate, except on severe cold weather, when it gets twenty, thirty below. Like anything else, it's going to be sticky.
Icing and things of that nature?
Nothing bothers it, except real cold weather.
It makes it very slow.
Right. What the operators do is jump out of the car and be able to assist to open up.
School bus drivers probably won't be...
Won't be able to do that, no.
There wouldn't be a lot of...
But that's a sliding thing, you know? They could do it with a, they could drive right through on a push button that's got the bar. They could just drive right through, and it wouldn't damage the bus any, because there wouldn't be any...
We're still looking into it. I'd like to tell you, we've got some early figures from one company, and we'll do some more research, and we're certainly open any suggestions when we're...
Yes, Keith? What would it take to put a stop sign up there in the meantime? Or we're looking to do it just to see if it does help? And then we put a stop sign on the other road without a major hassle? I mean, it's got to help, like Howard said, it's got to help with the ballpark traffic, just enabling kids to be able to cross there safely.
Yeah, I think you're looking at instant relief, and we could do that tomorrow morning.
Yeah, it's got to help, can't hurt.
That's true.
You don't mind if you stick them up? Marshall would stick them up.
Anything that would work to improve it would be greatly appreciated, because it is a nightmare.
Sign down ahead, because stop signs ahead are...
Yeah. You should put some stop signs.
Those standard signs, have those within a day or two, and have those installed.
I guess you've got to put a sign to tell you that they're there.
Yeah, there again, they're all very, very standard. It wouldn't require having anything very special.
As a matter of fact, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea somewhere. Too bad the press wasn't here to say that they're there. Pretty much, people will maybe even be thinking about stopping, you know, what will happen.
Except the one on Grove Street, right?
Who's going to know if they don't stop?
I have a question.
We will know, but I have a question.
I haven't, no offense to the sheriff, but I haven't seen the sheriff there since you asked him to be there. I live right across the road from where he usually does his watch, and since the time your study's been taken care of, he hasn't been there. Will someone be there to watch that they're not advancing through the stop sign?
Oh, yes.
Because there's no point in putting it up that slow.
No, we would not put it up without, you know, involving some type of enforcement.
But I'm sure that without...
Someone else had to hand it back.
Well, I was going to say the same thing. If you put a sign up, you want to make God kind of sure that if a guy hangs around there a week or so, make sure it is enforced.
If they're in school, it's...
That'd be business.
Okay. Let's try that.
The same as what we're making about in the Mulholland here, this one-way street here, stop sign, whatever. It seems to me when that was Route Three, it had all the traffic in the world going into Proctor, the trucks, et cetera, and all those people survived all these years. I don't know if there's been a major accident on that road. You change your, change your road system because there's a problem. There's an accident there, something's happened. You don't just change it because of convenience for people who don't want to back out or who want to back out on the driveway, et cetera. I'm not from Proctor, I'm from Rutland Town, I use that all the time. It just seems as though we've got to create a big problem here that really, the problem doesn't exist.
It's not a problem for you, John, it is for us.
Why do you use, what kind of department do you use that East Proctor Road?
Well, I have friends that live up there, I go that way, I get into a habit of taking that way, and I just walk that way, it's just a matter of habit.
Well, then, it shouldn't be a problem if there's a stop sign on it.
No, I'm not against a stop sign, I guess I'm against the, putting a gate up there, which I think is a ridiculous idea.
We don't.
I think those gates are for different situations.
Are you suggesting that we use the opposite approach?
Pardon?
Wait for someone to get hurt?
Well, last week, they're waiting for my house to burn down.
I would ask them to press all your comments forward, and we hope...
Well, I just come here to say that. I think you're making a lot of a mulholland. I failed to see that there's a big problem there with traffic on that little bypass or shortcut, and I guess that's, that's my comment.
Your comments you've taken, John. Anyone else have any comments regarding these Proctor Road situations?
Rod, when, when a new road is filled, there are a few people that suggested, Andy Orzell was one of them, that they continue, use the old road anywhere, and make that the main road to Proctor. They said, "Well, we're going to have a nice wide road, we're going to have sidewalks." And so we went, the state was opposed to it, they wanted the present rule. So we went to Proctor, and we had a meeting there, and everybody but Andy Orzell and another man were opposed to the road going up our way. And now we're running into the problem of solving all this traffic again, and we fought so hard to get rid of it and put it with, you know, in a present rotation.
Well, as I see it right now, we're going to try the stop signs. For the time being, we're going to do some more investigation, and within a couple, three days, you should see stop signs. I'm sure that's going to slow people down. Okay. Any other comments from the floor? Charlie, you see who I think is next?
Yes.
Sure.
I don't read the comic section of the newspaper, but this morning, I opened up and I hit the editorial page, and it was just like a comic section. I saw Connie Chung's ear, and I saw a devastating editorial about Rutland Town. A two-hundred-year-old newspaper has to resort to a picture of this to get our attention, I don't think that's necessary, has to resort to what they put in there, it wasn't necessary at all. Last few weeks, Rutland Town has made headlines. We've made headlines just about every damn day in that newspaper. And now that Tonya Harding, O.J. Simpson, and Ralph Wright aren't news anymore, I guess we're going to utilize Rutland Town's school and Rutland Town's fire department. It only was a couple years ago that Rutland Town made the papers. We were so damn compatible in this area that the city and the town should merge, and now here we are, a couple, couple years later, they're trying to divide us, and they're doing a damn good job by using our school system and our fire department. The mention of the past history of these organizations, that was damn poor journalism. I'm sure that Kip can go out in his pasture, and he can poke around in Kyle Menor, and he can get some smell out of anything that's a couple years old out there. I'm proud of our school, I'm proud of our fire department, and I know damn well the city of Rutland is proud of theirs, and they should justly be. And if there's news in the tax area, let them say all they want about the news in the tax area. Our governments and our court will take care of that, but leave our people the hell out of all of this mess. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Any other questions or comments from the floor? Howard?
Well, just one, one last thing.
Sure.
The town line in West Rutland and Rutland Town. You know, I got in a photo earlier.
Yes, I know.
I went up last Friday, or last Thursday, and ordered the rest of the photo coverage to go from the Proctor, West Rutland Town Line all the way down to the Clarendon Town Line. So that whole thing is, is in question. And I guess I'd like some direction as to where to, where to go from here with it. I, I had intended to do a field work and then mark up the photos and get everything on the photos as is in the field, and then turn it over to you guys to, you know, do the next thing. Is that, is that what you wish me to continue to do, or what? I really haven't had any direction, and I'm not sure if I'm...
Yeah, I'll be honest with you, I would. Charlie's up there holding the bag, and he shouldn't be. And if there's anything you can do, Howard, do it, and if we have to go to another source later, we will. We've gone to another source that didn't work, why don't you do it? That's my feeling, because we've got to do something for those people out there. You want to know which town you live in, if you don't know anything else.
At least start the process.
And I would, I would do what you can. You know, Howard, if there's some way, maybe somebody would know how, I still would think if you could contact a mount level company and find their old records, it may tell you something. I had experience with Proctor at that, my lies being wrong. We bought 140 acres in Rutland Town, and two years later, they came in and re-deeded it all, and, and at the time, I think it was 25 of it, they found out wasn't really in Rutland Town, it was in West Rutland. So you see, it's, it's been a mix-up, so somewhere, they found some records. And maybe if you make a phone call, it just may, you know, bring you up to date on something up through there.
Right. Yeah, it's going to mean doing that, getting over to West Rutland, checking some things...
I would do what you have to do, and then, and then, you know, if you come up with something that looks concrete, we'll do the process. That's my view, John.
Is there a possibility of being notified the next time you bring this subject up on the East Proctor Road at your next meeting?
Yeah, I wasn't keen for the agenda tonight. I mean, it was taken from the floor. Should it be, yeah, certainly.
But you're not making a decision tonight, are you?
No, we're not.
No.
Yeah, we're putting up stops.
Yeah, stops.
Am I correct?
Yeah. But you don't mind that, right?
No, no, we have nothing to...
And let's give it a try, and I do, really, because of people not knowing, somebody making a mistake, somehow, we ought to let people know that this is happening. Because, you know, people driving all over the day, may drive up through and never think of a stop sign, and somebody, the other may... So I'd like somehow to, to see if we couldn't get something, just to notify. Dick, can you do something on that?
Put a head in the paper.
I think that'd put a little, little ad in there. And then we'd kind of cover ourselves.
Put it in the editorial. It won't appear for a couple days.
Thursday, Friday? Well, then, I think I would wait till then to put the signs up. I really do, because...
Joe, can you key that with Marshall?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Any other comments? Not items five and six, a health officer report, a building inspector report, neither one available this evening. Road Commissioner, Marshall Fish. Would you...
How about Friday morning, getting Marshall? Thursday, Friday? Friday morning, get thirty, nine thirty? Ready, making a, ready for Marshall for Friday morning, nine thirty?
Yeah, I can't do Thursday with nine thirty.
We just both be here Friday morning, getting the budget.
And Kip, did you try to get something done with Kenny this week?
We've got him, he's male entertainment, so we're going to get him, get him on team maybe Wednesday night.
It's okay. How about next Monday, if we start the general budget? Would that be okay? Two weeks before it has to be finalized?
Seven, eight, nine, ten?
Yes. Recreation, we have no report on the recreation. We have a representative of planning commission here. Regional planning commission, David Dickinson.
Yeah, a few things to tell you about, one, I read in the paper, the town plan finally got approval by the regional planning commission, it was unanimous vote. The only issue that came up much at all was the bypass, and Representative Proctor raised some questions about that, wondering if the city and the town had reached conciliation on that, or if there'd been basically an agreement to disagree. And actually, I guess what happened was, language that you approved stayed the way it was, and the city, for whatever reason, sort of lessened their opposition to that language. It was, in my opinion, sort of a non-issue the whole time. They recognized the right of Rutland Town to have one position on the bypass, while theirs is somewhat different, although similar in some respects. So that was a good thing. One issue that came up, I thought you might be interested in, has to do with collecting of taxes. When Act 200 was implemented back in the late eighties, part of that was a funding mechanism which put a one percent, a half of one percent increase on the property transfer tax. That money is sent to the state of Vermont, and it was, under the provisions of Act 200, was supposed to come back to towns for, and to the regional planning commission for planning efforts. It did the first year, then after that, the legislature took that money and put it into the general fund. That tax is due to expire this coming year. There's an individual who was sponsoring a bill in this session of legislature, and is going, is going to try and reinstate that tax. And under that proposal, the way it was explained to us, and the way that's kind of being supported by some regional planning commissions, is that that tax would still be in effect, but the money, instead of going to the state government, would go to regional planning commissions, and they in turn would give it directly to towns, and it's sort of divided up among the towns in their area. Most of the people at the regional planning commission seem sort of in favor of that concept, but, you know, perhaps I'm a little paranoid, but I want to ask you what your feelings were. In one sense, it's a foot in the door, in my opinion, for county government and regional taxation. That's my personal view of it. They are going to be discussing this at future meetings, and the regional planning commission is going to be taking a position on it. Mark Blutcher, I believe, is in, in favor of this concept. But the question really is, you know, are you in favor of continuing this tax on property transfers, and in the hopes that you will get some back from the regional planning commission, or would you just rather see the tax expire the way it's, it's due? I could just sort of ask you for a feeling, you know, on that. Or maybe like a meeting to think it over, and I can ask you next week?
Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of new stuff. What you're actually asking is, should, should it be continued rather than expired, as you said?
Yeah. The difference would be that the regional planning commission would collect the money instead of the state of Vermont. I mean, that's the thing that sort of hits me in the face, it's something very different.
Where will the difference come in? Them collecting it rather than the state?
Well, that it's, you know, in other states where they have county government, there's a regional taxing authority. Right now, we have the state of Vermont taxes individuals, and municipalities tax individuals. But regional planning commissions have never been in this business of, you know, taxing people. And, I mean, in some ways, it's good if you, if you get the money back, but on the other hand, somebody has to pay that, you know, has to pay that tax. Um, and the question is, what's really going on here? This, you know, this is, I'll tell you upfront, I'm, I'm a little biased on this issue, because when I started at the Regional Planning Commission, their budget was like about a hundred thousand dollars, and then when Act Two Hundred came in, and it was a big glut of state money, it bloated up to like three and four hundred thousand. Um, and then what happened, those funds were cut back from the state for planning purposes, and what's happened at the Regional Planning Commission is they're getting big influxes of transportation money now, so they're, that's why Dean Pierce works, uh, primarily on transportation, 'cause that's where the funding is. So I, you know, Mark Blutcher naturally would like to get the most money he can, but if you, if you added a, a bigger budget for planning purposes, plus this transportation, they're gonna get a bigger staff, and it'll be a bigger organization, and previous boards of selectmen have been concerned about, you know, the local versus regional control issue. Um, and, and that's just the only problem I see with the Regional Planning Commission, um, you know, collecting taxes. So I, I'll just throw it out, that, it's just a proposal at this point. It, it's, uh, gonna be a bill in legislature, and, you know, if you think it over and have a position one way or another, you should let a representative know, you know, it's the which way.
I know. I certainly would, I'd with you, I would favor staying as local as we can.
Do you need a lunch or two weeks?
Uh, yeah, well, I guess the next meeting they'll probably discuss it, but, uh, I, I just raised some questions at the last meeting, because, um, you, you know, we're living in kind of financially tight times, and, um, it's fine to get these big budgets for regional planning, but if you think on how some of that money was spent, like all the solid waste planning, and all, all of the sort of extra planning that was done, and you end up with studies sitting on the shelf, you know, that are never used, and somebody had to pay for all that. And, uh, so, you know, sometimes I think, uh, just throwing a lot of money at planning is not the best use of, uh, resources, when people are already strapped on, you know, taxes anyways.
Right.
But that's just my opinion, you should think it over and tell me what you think.
We'll, we'll give it two weeks, and we'll be back here, you'll be here on next meeting.
Yeah.
Anything else, Steve, on your report?
Um, just on the bypass, they're still working on it, and they've been telling us we'd have a mid-winter meeting, um, like, they said January, but we're looking at February, March, um, where they'll be updating on the alignments they've chosen, and the, the work they're doing, it's just be sort of an update on where they are in the, in the process.
It seems, it seemed about quite a...
Yeah, well, they're working, they're chalking out, they're chalking up hours and spending money, but it's just that, this EIS process is a little different than the one J H K had, um, they aren't having as much interplay. In fact, this next meeting, their planning isn't really required under federal regulations, but they thought it'd be a good idea, but, uh, and all of a sudden, they'll hit us bang with them.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, David. Um, Ministry of Assistant, Jones and Galley.
Rod, first item I have there is in your green envelope, and what you have there is the, um, contract with Dufray Henry.
Right.
Um, for the well water project. And essentially, by signing the agreement, we'll proceed to bring the well driller up sometime this week, um, and, um, drill additional test wells, uh, two and a half inch wells, to try to find the best location for a production well.
Okay.
I think there's three places in there you're doing the design.
Pleasure the board on this matter?
Just continuation of the project, okay.
Gee, okay, sign.
Yeah.
Okay.
I had a, a brief report on the electric gate, but I think you covered most of the issues.
Okay.
The only thing I would suggest, if, if you want, if it isn't convenient, we don't know that yet, but if it's not convenient for the board to all go down and look at the gate, what I might do is film it and distribute it on VHS if you wanna look at that one. Because I do understand they have some mechanical problems, and you might wanna check that out.
All right. Something else too, we had to investigate, other types?
Yeah, I've got that list here already. I just, I wanted to get your price to see what ballpark we're in, starting.
Okay.
And you noticed there was two prices there, and one is for a shorter standing fence.
Uh-huh.
I don't know, um, there's nothing on the agenda, but we had an item in the packet there, um, from Riddick, Riddick, the Riddick Organization.
Yeah.
Um, do you wanna do anything with that? Basically, they're asking...
Yeah, they're asking for the co-sign on a grant application.
Well, that, well, actually, I think, I think they're asking for a resolution.
Yeah.
And cities are, Clarendon and Riddick have already co-signed.
They're trying to get a, a state or a federal grant?
I honestly don't know, Rod.
Yeah, it's one or the other, and, uh, we're just looking for our support, basically.
Well, is, what are we looking for? That's, I guess, my name.
Well, they're looking for money eventually to do something in terms of private development.
Yeah, I've got no problem with that, but what, this has gotta be tied into some type of, an org, basically, organizational setup or something.
Well, whatever was in the letter that I sent to you is all that we see.
Does that have to be done tonight?
No.
I really didn't...
It's gonna be done by February. I just wanted to gain more information, we can have...
Why don't we look it over?
I believe the gentleman's name is Brian.
Okay, I really didn't do that.
The main director who was over there.
Yeah, we could have him command it.
Yeah, I've got no problem with helping with the grant money, but I just wanna make sure what the strings attached to that, that's all.
Well, we can hold, I just wanted to bring...
Yeah, I, I really didn't look at it, I didn't mention it.
Um, received a call today from Paula Baker from the library. Um, she wanted to know if you would like her to come in and talk to you about the funding request, or whether you plan to just, you know, put it on the ballot like the previous year.
We haven't received it yet.
Yeah. Wasn't in the last packet?
No, I don't believe so. I don't recall seeing a dollar on the library.
I haven't seen it. Okay, well, you should have received it, I haven't.
I don't, anybody?
No, we haven't.
Would you want her to come in, or, I can probably give you a copy for your meeting tonight, would you please?
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll, we'll know if you want to escape.
Yeah.
Got Mark Sperry scheduled to come down here on January twenty-third to, uh, talk to the board about the new municipal ordinance enforcement procedure. We've talked about this in the past, the legislature changed things now, so ordinances can be, um, prosecuted civil rather than just criminal, which means, for instance, the dog amendment that you're considering. Depending if you wanna go to this new system, we would adopt it a certain way, which would create a local official who would have the authority to, to find people and collect fines and, and, um... But before we move into that, Mark, I wanted to talk to the board, 'cause there are some, some pros and cons to the way of doing business that way.
Yes, I, I talked with Mark Sperry today, and, uh, he will be here on the twenty-third to go over this with us, and, uh, we have a draft of a, of a dog ordinance that would include leash provisions. And he also said it would be appropriate to see how that would work, uh, what he plans on discussing with us on the twenty-third. So, basically, I don't think we're gonna be doing anything with this ordinance tonight.
No, that's basically, if you don't look at, and Rod pointed out, the, the main thrust there for anyone listening or watching is, in the future, a dog in Rutland Town, not on its owner's property, not on a leash, is, is in violation of, of, of the law, unless that dog is under the owner's command, if the person's jogging and the dog's running along with them, or if the person's walking and the dog's with them. But if the person's in the backyard gardening and the dog is in his neighbor's yard, that's not under his control, that dog is in violation, whereas presently, that dog wouldn't be in violation. And that's, that's the key change, and that's, that's what mended, that's how there is reason.
What we did, pardon, basically, is take the ordinance that we had and amend it, and include some of the, the amendments that men had, and intermingle the two ordinances to come up with this draft. So, I thought it looked like a fairly decent document, um, I think it does what we've been asked to do.
I've been speaking with Mrs. Pennington, as you know, who spearheaded the petition. She seems happy with words going, I've explained to her what, and I even explained to her tonight, you probably wouldn't adopt it, because we're waiting for the meeting with our board, and she said that'd be fine.
Okay.
Okay. Um, going to an item Howard had brought up about the, um, field work for the, the mapping, um, he and I were talking, and it would be helpful if it'd be, if it'd be allowable for us to purchase a small hand compass to work out in the fields, and get bearings, um, so we can follow some lines and try to establish some lines up in the field. And I think we've got a price of about ninety to a hundred dollars on a small compass that would do the job, that would be something we could purchase. One of the things that Howard wants to do, on the Boardman Hill area, is to try to, um, follow a line which, a stone wall that disappears and goes over a hill, but with a compass, one could, you know, Howard, you can explain one better, get the bearing, and know where to walk, and see if it lines up with where the law used to be.
It is, it's handy for other lister work, too, but there's times when you just yell and feel, and, uh, in these subdivisions, a hand compass is to give a worthwhile tool just to have in here from time to time.
I think it's a good idea, if these guys go up there and get lost, you can't send a search.
Can't find the person.
Cost you more than I did, always get them back.
Well, we hosted the town property in Northwood, we didn't wind up on city property. Yeah.
What's your, what would you play here?
Should we motion, please?
I'll make your motion.
Your motion, the first is a compass, second by Gee.
Chief of Health.
Hathaway, any discussion? Hearing on all those appearing in motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passed.
Okay. Next thing? Um, last, well, two weeks ago, I received a phone call from the, um, one of the engineers down at the General Electric Facility in town, and he had notified me that, uh, they had significant sewer orders in the building, and which was, you know, quite a concern, because there could always be the possibility of combustion and explosion. So I had an engineer from Dufray Henry come up and meet with me and go down to the plant immediately. Um, P. Engineer thought it was appropriate, considering the, um, the intensity of the smell that got reported to us. So we went down and, you know, toured the building and looked, and pretty much determined that it may be an internal problem with G. E., perhaps some of the traps had dried out and orders were now coming into the building. But subsequent to all that, we did a walk down the railroad tracks, and what we discovered was, um, the Zomias group has already connected to the town sewer line. Now, we have an ordinance that requires a permit, no permit was applied for, the sewer connection was made. What I wanted to ask tonight is if you want me to issue a, um, a violation order to them, it wouldn't be appropriate. Um, we received no plans, no specifications, they drilled into the manhole and made the connection, and have left it open.
You had no approval to do that, what's the word?
No approval, no application.
Should we first see if maybe it is a miscommunication in the contract and whoever?
I had notified them, John.
Oh, you had?
Numerous occasions, that they need to apply for a permit before they begin work on that. And as a result of this, I found out how it had been connected. So, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, and I do think you probably should have issued some sort of notification to them, and immediately ask for plans to, to get the plans.
I think so, too.
Oh, yeah, we need to apply, I think.
Yes, uh, I think that's, uh, that would be appropriate, in such a situation, it's nothing that we would do any different than with anyone else.
No, and it may have been a very good connection, we just don't know. I mean, uh, we didn't, we had, normally, we would've had either Kip or Gene or someone on the board go down and observe the connections, we've done that in the past, and they'd look for, you know, minor things like, did any debris get into the line, did they clean it out properly, and so on. None of this was done, we, we have no verification.
How big a path would this be?
Well, we had an eight or ten inch line that runs along the railroad right of way, and then came in perpendicular into the manhole, so they actually poured into the, the concrete.
Casing of the manhole?
Yeah. And, um, at the time, we weren't able to lift the cover, but, um, the Dufray Henry engineer did go back, his name was Frank LaRocque, and he did say it looked okay. But again, we have no plans or anything.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's something they shouldn't have been doing.
We should send a letter to the construction engineer, modify them.
Would you be putting that notice with that, Joe?
Well, I would think we've done, under the ordinance, it'd be the landowner, so it'd be...
The Zomias group?
Oh, no, technically, now it's called Rutland Regional Shopping Mall Limited Partnership, or something to that effect.
Didn't change the name at all, did it?
No, but that's what the, uh, tax records indicated, now we're the ownership. So, uh, that's what we'll modify.
Whatever is appropriate, please.
Um, on another matter, Willie was in, and he reported that, um, the transfer station operated pretty well over the weekend. I don't know if any members had a chance to get up there, it was their first big day, but it actually wasn't that big a day, the actual bag count was weighed down.
A miserable day, weather-wise.
Yeah, I think that kept a lot of people away.
Tony and Willie have already come up with some jet, some suggestions, and I think
they're good, to modify the way the building works inside, basically putting more containers, so there's not just... For instance, right now, if someone came in, they drive to one end, have to walk all the way back to get rid of their cans. We'll put canned containers at this end and the other end, so it'll make it more convenient for them.
We have the carts to do that.
We have the carts to do that.
Plus, I think we, we should also open one or two of the outside doors, individuals who don't have a lot of materials to bring in, maybe just one bag of recyclables, there really isn't any need in them driving through the facility to do that. They just carry it, deposit it, and leave.
So, I'm, I was glad to see that Tony and Willie, you know, are taking an interest in how it operates, 'cause they're the ones more than us, or the board, or, or engineers who are gonna make it work, 'cause they're up there.
Yeah, I was there Saturday, and it was a nasty day, we had sweet freezing rain, snow, everything going on outside, and it was absolutely beautiful in there.
I was very wet.
It was, it was very nice, it was, uh, it worked very well for people, they didn't even want to be outside in that weather.
That's good, that's what you wanted. Um, well, the last item I had was on, um, the pay matter, and I don't know if this would be appropriate, time or later, if you want to do an executive session, um, but basically, I, I don't know if they're planning to speak for us non-union, you know, employees altogether, or whatever, but I think essentially, what Dick and I had talked, we, we, I'll be looking for the cost of living, and I would ask if, if you would consider giving us, not just myself, but the other, um, municipal employees, some, maybe some small merit consideration. Um, I'd just like to point out that the, the town school board did just that last year, with their non-union employees, and some received as much as nine percent, whereas we here got three percent last year. Now, it doesn't do much for morale, when we see them getting, you know, the high raises from year to year, I don't believe we would see the cost of living for four or five years now. So if you would consider some merit increase, that, that would be appreciated.
Uh, I should point out, if I recall correctly, that the employees who received that at school last year hadn't received raises for several years, so they felt that it was sort of overdue, and I'd like to receive that. Your, your comments would well take.
My pleasure.
We'll, we'll be discussing that. If not tonight, certainly next Monday, at the latest.
And also on budget time, if you'd wanna get together, um, it's sort of taken between Dick and myself, but, um, we're looking at some, you know, purchases internally that you oughta think about, perhaps a new computer, and, um, for various reasons. And also, the mapping project that we've discussed a couple of years, if you wanna proceed with that, and rather than get into a discussion tonight, if you wanna schedule me someday when we're here to come in and talk to you about those two projects, I can give you some prices.
Well, we'll be here next Monday evening, I know that isn't a meeting you plan on working, but...
After I take the school's picture, we'll, we'll come down.
Yeah, don't mind putting over, um, I think that's, be appropriate, and discuss that.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Anything else, Joe?
No, I, I believe that's all.
Okay.
Any...
Does the engineer, did the engineer set up a job description for the employees at the, at the landfill, at the transfer station?
No.
So down the road, down the road...
It's pretty much left up to us.
Wouldn't it be appropriate?
Uh, yeah, internal operations of the facility are actually our responsibility. Um, they designed the building, and that was pretty much...
Well, whoever, wouldn't it be appropriate to have job descriptions for the individuals up there?
Sure, sure. We haven't had time to actually work into that now. Um, they're both kind of sharing responsibilities, is what I understand, and so far, it's worked pretty well. I haven't heard, I haven't had my phone ringing with any complaints, so I guess, other than maybe slow times where cars get backed up.
You've got unlisted number problems.
No, I don't. There are times I wish I did, but no, I don't. Now, we'll be going over that, uh, with them. So far, though, it's, it's worked out pretty well. Yeah, the last thing I had, and this wasn't on the agenda, is, um, Mike D'Anni is here tonight, and Jeff Donnicki is here tonight, um, and Kenny Hubbard didn't make it. Um, on the recycling solid waste, all have submitted proposals at this time, um, they only came in today with the exception of East Mountain, um, which came in Friday, so you haven't had a chance to look at any of those.
I haven't even seen a couple of these.
I, I told the gentleman that we had, like, they may not be a decision.
Right.
But they wanted to be available in case you had any questions.
Um, I don't have any questions, because I've only actually seen one, and that was East Mountain View Company, whatever that is.
East Mountain Transport.
He's going to take a while to go through some of these, uh, the Cassella proposals, several pages long, so that's going to take a little while. And I, I'd like the board to review this based on the fact we've just received it, and maybe, uh, in a couple of weeks, have a meaningful discussion on what exactly we should do.
Oh, trash compactor's going to be full.
Pardon me?
I said the trash compactor's going to be full.
We have someone hauling trash right now, and we can do that, you know, to the end of time.
Sure.
Um, what we're looking for is, is a long-term agenda here, and the recyclable containers aren't going to fill within two weeks, and, uh, you know, if it gets full, I think Hubbard now is hauling, we'll just haul that and dump that, do like that. And, uh, hopefully by then, we'll have, uh, we'll have something a little more firm that we can discuss. This is all, your, your proposal is very new, first time I've seen it, as well as Cassella's and Hubbard's, so we have, we're here to totally do this, uh, as a five hundred seven tonight, so that doesn't give us a whole lot of time to, to look them over, they're all different, just looking at them, glancing at them, they're all different, so I would appreciate it.
Well, it's not a compact, so you kind of just had to feel it out, because it was not, you know, bid this or bid that, it's kind of submit something and see what you guys feel like.
Oh, we, we have to review them.
Hmm, definitely.
You know, within a couple of weeks, hopefully, we'll have, we'll be able to comment on them, okay? Thank you for coming, I apologize if, you know, we aren't going to do more than that tonight, but we really can't right now.
Mr. Chairman, will you keep us posted as to progress or the need for, has to be here as far as discussions or questions, or?
Is, uh, questions arise, I would, uh, ask the board, please get ahold of Joe, and see if we can answer a lot of those questions ahead of time, as they may relate to each individual's bid, and then, uh, that would solve a lot of problems, save a lot of time, uh, in the next two weeks. So as you look those over, and you have questions, please call Joe, and he'll try to get those answers ahead of time for us. Okay?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All of you. Uh, Tim Perry is going to fight me tonight, fire chief, Dick Delbianco, town clerk.
Two weeks ago, I told you that we were going out to bid for a tax anticipation loan. Then tonight, you have to make a motion, and the motion should read that the town of Rutland will borrow eight hundred thousand dollars from the Marble Bank at an interest rate of five point one percent for two hundred and forty days, and that Marble Bank needs that and they're documented, they were a little bitter. Marble Bank was at five point one, Chittenden five point one four, Vermont National Bank five point five, Green Mountain Bank five point five five, and New Bush Vermont Bank five point ninety five. So, uh...
This is our normal, uh, procedure to do every year, because tax money we receive done until September, and if you recall, ballot item, uh, last March, shall we select to operate as to borrow money in anticipation of taxes, well, because taxes aren't anticipated until September, we have to borrow money to operate the town until such a time, and I predict it's right there right now. This is something we do every year.
Well, I'll make the motion that we borrow from the Marble Bank, and just exactly the way you said it.
Okay. Very good. I'd have a motion of, of sort, I guess, and then a second. Add a second by Gene Hathaway.
Any discussion?
Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is passed. And I have to sign. Uh, we all have to sign, okay?
And they weren't, uh, exactly sure how it would work, but anyway, there's five signatures there, bond under mine.
You put in our title, Dick.
Yeah. While you're signing, um, auditors are here, and, uh, got started on auditing the books. Um, the four main budgets, work sheets are all.
Okay.
I sent seven work sheets to Karen Bosley and five to Timmy Perry, and Marshall the Friday morning, uh, he has a copy.
Okay.
And, um, and the other, the general from Monday night, so we're...
So the books are officially closed on ninety-four? All the bills are going to be paid, or?
Just the bills that we want, yeah.
Okay.
These, tonight, are all ninety-five.
They're all ninety-five, okay. Have anything else, Dick?
No.
Anybody have any questions on the town clerk figure? Okay, um, that completes our reports. Dick Lloyd, you're not on until eight-ten, but you're here, you're certainly welcome to it.
I just want to item if I could.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Catherine is here tonight, George, George Wunder.
George, George Son of Laura.
He was, I think, wanting to check up on the road matter, and it does look like we have a, a, um, agreement that Mark Sperry is going to approve shortly. Couldn't touch base until late this afternoon. If he does approve, and it looks like it's going to be snowing the next few days, would it be appropriate to ask maybe the, the board members to come by, and, because I know that's why you're here tonight, for plowing, right?
Yeah.
I've also received.
Maintenance, right, I need it bad, I'm sick of shoveling salt.
Because it'd be, it'd be two weeks, but then again, they will be meeting Monday night.
Is, is that...
I don't know, is that matter for the whole board, Rod, or is that just going to come, uh, few people to the board after the highway committee? The board doesn't, the ultimate thing in the end is the board accept it, right? I didn't know if it got as far as the highway committee, and I don't know who was on the highway committee, I know John was on it.
John, well, I am, I'll be honest with you, there's, there's going, I guess everything is in order, isn't it, Joe?
It, it looks it, John, we're just waiting for Mark Sperry to confirm that.
The last thing was...
I, I would say that, really, those people up there should have road maintenance, and I would say that if, if Jill can get a confirmation from Mark, that it's all set, except for our signing, I would just assume they proceed with it.
Well, has Marshall agreed that the road is acceptable?
Yeah, Marshall, before we even got into this issue, you know, because it was a legal issue, not a road construction issue.
So, if that's right, i- if, if Jill gets confirmation from, from Mark, our attorney, that it, that it's all set, and it's just a matter of us doing our thing, uh, we're right into that type of season, that's all there's to it. And I, I'm worried by people up there, too, and, you know, they're on support, and they think it's a toll road, time has just beat them this up.
Marshall has accepted it?
Yeah, Marshall's accepted it, and it's a matter of, just a matter of, of Mark getting the paperwork out those stuff to sign, and there's a storm tomorrow, I don't see any problem doing it.
Only the problem I see is liability, I think.
Well, that's what I've indicated before, uh, you were saying about the time of liability, you're out there with your trucks, but, um...
I'd be, I'm a little skeptical of doing that until it's officially our road, I appreciate the dilemma, and I could...
Well, how about if we do this, can you ask Mark to rush that through, we're going to be here.
Next Monday.
Monday night.
I would think we can do it.
We'll be here Monday on our, for our budgets, and we'll all be here that night, maybe we could take care of it that night.
We'll have it ready for Monday.
We can warn that as a selectmen's meeting, but our primary function to do budgets.
We all, we all know the world revolves around liability today.
Yeah. That's fair.
And then, you know, we can, we can deal with that, we want it as a meeting, even though it's, it's a budget prep night, you know, where we can sign.
We'll take care of it Monday, okay? Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Now, Dick Lloyd, you can take you, if you like, as collector.
Thank you.
All right.
I can give you my annual report.
All right.
Um, I'm wide open for questions, the only thing that I, I won't divulge is anybody's names, uh, it's not held in the language of my opinion at this time. Um, nineteen ninety-three, total outstanding, I'm learning these figures, the total outstanding dollars for that year is four thousand dollars, and there are eight people involved in that. In nineteen ninety, this is real estate, nineteen ninety-four, there are four businesses involved, and the grand total of two thousand dollars in personal property inventory, that's on the books, so to speak. Nineteen, uh, ninety-four, real estate, the grand total, uh, is thirteen thousand dollars in arrears, that's all, that's all. The grand total, the grand total of all delinquent taxes in the town of Rutland, as of this date, is seventeen thousand dollars. To give you a breakdown, uh, again, long figures, uh, I, I can almost give you, like, percentages, um, we have real estate, eighty-nine percent of all the taxes have been collected in real estate, personal property, ninety-five percent of all of the delinquent taxes have been collected. We have five different accounts in the fire districts, there are the sewer, fire district, sewer bond, for heights, sewer use for heights, sewer disposal, and water bond, one hundred percent of those taxes have been collected. Um, so, based to my knowledge, Rutland Town has the lowest, in my opinion, and I can, uh, back that up with a, a lot of documentation, the lowest delinquent tax rate in the state of Vermont per capita, uh, which is something that I'm proud of, uh, I'm happy for, and, uh, we don't have too much more to get in, and, uh, hopefully, we'll, by the time the time report is published, it will be lower than that, that's my objective. Does anybody have any questions?
We're real proud of it, Dick, and I'm sure that other years, we've been the lowest also.
Oh, yes, yes, we have, John, this has been, uh, probably one of the best years, and, um, hopefully, we can continue this trend, and, uh, everybody that's delinquent in ninety-three, and almost everybody in ninety-four, is making financial payments, so they're all making an attempt. And, um, I want to thank the board of selectmen for your support, and, uh...
We think you've done a good job.
Thank you.
Those are remarkably good numbers, though. For a town this size, well, with the kind of money that, you know, that we spend to run this government, have that little bit still outstanding, and even attempts being made to clear up that situation, it's, it's remarkable.
And hopefully, the one other thing, uh, came up two weeks ago, and I guess that, that's not really an issue now, but, uh, I have made myself available more than eight hours a day, uh, with Adrian, I'll, I'll continue to do that on my own, um, uh, it's proven extremely beneficial, and, uh, uh, it doesn't help me lower the numbers as much as it does help me be accessible to the taxpayers, and I think that's extremely important, and I will continue that. Make the free support, Dick.
Thank you very much, Dick.
Rod?
Yes, Gene?
While Dick was here.
Sure.
I know we brought that up a couple of weeks ago, but, uh, I don't know, we were still supposed to discuss that and make a vote on that, or a decision, whether we're going to do something with Adrian or not.
No, I think when Tony's, if we decide to wait a bunch of time, I think this we're going to do it.
Tony, are you still requesting that paper, by the way, or?
Well, um, I understand, there's a certain amount of, uh, of, of varying ages of opinions to whether we should pay for what.
Yeah.
And, um, I guess the bottom line is, I want to serve, serve the people, uh, I don't think that we should tie up, you know, a lot of time with, with that issue, um, again, I did a study, uh, it proved, uh, cost-effective, uh, I, I, I plan on continuing it myself. I may not be for a full twelve months, but for the, the peak period, so to speak, uh,